...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have two items on, uh, let me just explain that. Commissioner Yusha Reddy will be just a little bit late. She's been delayed, so I wanted to, um, the, there are just two items on the agenda this evening. First is the update of the feasibility study for water, wastewater, street, fleet, forestry, and park maintenance joint facility. And Rob Ott, the Director of Public Works, is here to present to us.
Thank you, Mayor. Did you want me to tap dance and wait for Commissioner Reddy or?
I think she's been delayed long enough that it probably should...
Okay, so my act won't work very good.
Yeah. Well, thank you, though. It's a good idea, but I think, I think she's stuck.
This evening, we've gathered to talk about an update to the feasibility study for a joint facility to combine, as you mentioned, Mayor, street maintenance, fleet, water distribution, sanitary sewer, collection maintenance, forestry and park maintenance. Now, this is a work session item. However, we do need some direction on a couple of different questions. Those questions are at the end of the presentation. Um, and I'll just go ahead and get started for our agenda. So we're going to do some tag teaming up here between myself and Patrick Schwab. I do have Patrick Schwab here of Bowman, Bowman &amp; Novick Architects here in town. And Patrick will lead you through the existing sites, facts and information, and what they observed, as well as his team's recommendations in the final report. And then we kind of have some staff recommendations and staff discussion, and that's where those questions are. So how did we begin this journey? We began the journey back in 2006 doing a request for qualifications, RFQ, which was authorized by the Commission, and began looking at this possibility of doing a joint facility. We received over eight different proposals. Commissioner Dodson was on the selection committee. We selected BBN as our, our team, and they began moving forward in April of 2016. They started out with numerous interviews of all the different divisions and sections down at the various locations, and they delivered a feasibility report to us back in 2017. And here we are talking about the next steps. So this evening, we're going to talk about, I guess it's technically four locations in my mind, it's really three, but I think the opening statements really don't pull too many punches. The sites, the buildings, the configurations were never really, never originally designed and laid out for municipal services that we provide out of these locations. The sites were not sized for a growing community, and most importantly, a growing number of assets in Manhattan which have to be maintained. As of the end of 2017, there is 1.57 million feet of water main in the city of Manhattan. There is 1.32 million feet of sanitary sewer, and then there's 231 centerline miles of streets have to be maintained. There's about a billion trees and a couple trillion blades of grass have to be trimmed. I didn't have time to get, Eddie, to get the exact numbers, but they, they maintain and take care of a lot of things as well, and as the community continues to grow. So with that, I'm going to ask Patrick to come up and help me, and he's going to talk about these different locations, kind of starting with the Juliette site, which is, which houses the street and the fleet folks, as well as their salt storage domes. The fleet guys take care of everything in the entire city, so not just, uh, public works vehicles, but park and rec, community development, everyone that has a vehicle. And then we'll talk about, uh, the park and rec shops and what the forestry folks, holtacultural, forestry department, and then finally to the Anderson spot where our utilities folks are. So with that, Patrick, I'll let you take over.
Thank you, Rob. Good evening, Commissioners. Happy to be here tonight to talk to you about this. As Rob mentioned, we did site analysis on the, what are four, primarily three existing sites that house maintenance facilities for the city. Over a course of many weeks, we gathered information from onsite visits, photography, GIS information, measured drawings and analysis of the vehicles on the site, and we conducted four solid days of interviews with all of the crews and staff that work at those sites. We did 25 separate interviews over the course of four days to gather information about the sites and strengths and pros and cons and needs and desires of those. So I'll quickly run through what we found at each of the sites. Uh, the, the site is 620-621 Juliette, or what is known as the city shops down there along Fort Riley Boulevard. It's just under three acres of site with 14,500 square feet of enclosed buildings. We do have a number of concerns. I'll go through those a little bit more in detail, but primarily limited expansion possibilities with the railroad line, line to the south of that site, and being bounded by streets on its perimeter, and we have a lot of traffic conflicts as well. And I'll talk about those as we go along. This is the site highlighted along Fort Riley Boulevard. There's a strip commercial along Fort Riley Boulevard, so we sit behind the alley. We refer to it as two sites because South Juliette actually bisects the site and is a public street, so there is quite a bit of circulation of vehicles between and across Juliette, between the two sites. Primarily, the city street crews are on the west half of the site, west of Juliette, and the city maintenance facilities, fleet maintenance facilities are on the east side, along with the salt spreader racks and some storage of vehicles. Several photographs, this is one of the, the building where the street crew works in the upper left-hand corner. As it exists right now, this is their shop that they work in and store vehicles in. The upper right-hand corner are some of the materials bins where they keep mulch and gravel and things that they use in the day-to-day maintenance of the streets. We've got the salt dome on the lower left, which is inadequately sized based on our analysis, where a good portion of the city's street salt is held. And then there's an image of some of the outdoor covered vehicle storage, which, as you can see here, not quite big enough to completely cover the vehicles that are stored there. Uh, and then these are some of the interior spaces where the, the staff work, break room in the upper left-hand corner, some of the crew leader's office space to the right, and then another view of that street shop in the lower left. Some of the storage of parts and equipment that goes on and mezzanine in the fleet maintenance building. The upper right is a view of the welding shop, where vehicles of all sizes are brought in to have welding repairs, and then generally in the bottom, just one of the views of the fleet maintenance bays, where they happen to be working there on a vehicle. Some of the things that we noticed in touring these sites is that, in general, this site is, the sites for doing maintenance are very poorly lighted, there's poor ventilation, and they're very low buildings. They were built just as vehicle storage buildings at one time, so you can see here raising the cover on this vehicle is one thing, but when you get a dump truck or something in there and try to raise the bed, there's not adequate room for hoisting inside of the vehicle maintenance bays. This is a layout of the site that we've highlighted, the various buildings. All of the items in blue are existing enclosed spaces, and they range on the right-hand side of the, of the slide, the vehicle maintenance shop, the utilities shops, and some vehicle storage and the spreader racks. And to the west side, or to the left of the, of the slide, are the offices, administrative offices for the street crews, the vehicle storage shed that the street folks operate out of, and then the salt dome to the far left. The, the rectangular building just to the right of the salt dome is where they store the street sweeper. So this is an analysis diagram of the site where we identified some advantages and disadvantages. And really, the main advantage to this site is that it's centrally located, there's a great response time for the salt trucks and stuff to get to downtown to work. And of course, it's property owned, already owned by the city. But as we mentioned earlier, we do have limitations on this site, a little chance for expansion because of the railroad and the, the areas to the east and the west, and Fort Riley Boulevard and the strip commercial to the north. Item number one up there, we have a busy intersection with a lot of vehicles from the city going in and out of that intersection on a daily basis. We have private vehicles running along South Juliette Avenue to the residences to the south, while city crews are crossing back and forth with their vehicles. And all the sites, we're going to see that there's an issue that we don't have a separation between the city vehicles and staff parking, which can run into some issues with vehicle impacts or coordinations there. There's a fueling station on this site that has very limited access. It's hard to get to and to maneuver around, and there's just a general limit on the amount of storage we have on the site for both vehicles and for materials. The next site I'm going to talk about is the parks and rec shops on El Paso Lane, along Fort Riley Boulevard as well, 1326 to 1417. This is just over an acre in size. They have just under 8,000 square feet of enclosed space on the site. And you'll see a repeat of many of the concerns that we had at the city shops, a lack of space going on there, inadequate building size and traffic conflicts. One thing in particular that's interesting here is that the parks and rec crews do use a significant amount of chemicals, pesticides and things, and there are not adequate mixing and storage facilities for chemicals on that site, which is certainly a safety concern. This is the, that site highlighted again along Fort Riley Boulevard. To the left-hand side of the screen is their primary building. It's their shops and vehicle storage and administration are in that single building. They park vehicles there just to the right of that. The sort of space in the middle, which is the abandoned South 14th Street site, is where they also park vehicles. It's just a gravel lot unstriped, and they sort of park them in there where they will fit, and then staff and vehicle parking happens to the east. These are some views of the inside of that building. You can see in the upper left, this is some of their document and map storage areas. Also serves as bicycle storage evidently. You can see in this slide, some administrative and break area to the upper right, and then the typical offices and locker room space for the crews at the bottom of the slide. These are some views of their shops. It's interesting to note that the vehicle shops are actually used as meeting space. They have tables and chairs set up in there because there's no other place for the crews to gather and meet. You can see some of the small vehicle storage in that same space, and then the parts in the lower left, part storage as it exists now, and then the way they park the vehicles onsite is represented in the lower right. Here's some aerial photos of some of that vehicle storage. You can see they have to stack the vehicles too deep, which makes retrieving vehicles a bit of a chess match at times. This is a diagram of the site. You can see the single blue building there, which is both the maintenance bays, the offices in, and also the wood shop. The wood shop in this site is not only used for parks and rec, but other divisions come here also, so there is some conflict with access to that wood shop at times with other departments parking their vehicles and trying to have access to work in that location. There are other issues with the wood shop we can talk about as well. This is our sort of pros and cons diagram. The primary things is that the existing maintenance bays are really too small to have some of the taller vehicles parked in, and they don't have enough room for the staff to have adequate meeting and gathering space, so they end up using those vehicle maintenance bays for that meeting space. I mentioned the storage of pesticides and mixing of pesticides on the site is, is a problem, and just the fact that the parking isn't paved for the, the maintenance vehicles and crew vehicles, and they're sort of parked haphazardly, it's not efficiently used on the site, so they lack adequate space for storage of their materials and their vehicles. Again, this one has some restrictions because of the residential surrounding the property. The city does own this site, but none of those adjacent to it, and so again, expansion is, is difficult. And then finally, we'll talk about 3131 Anderson Avenue. This is the newer of the facilities. This is the utilities and water division. They have 1.15 acres of site, 9,500 square feet of enclosed space. I'll go to the, the view of that. This is that highlighted location. It's at the south end of Reef Road in the intersection of Anderson, and they've got, what was a former fire station, and they've built a new indoor vehicle storage building along the east property line there on the site. Some views of that site on the upper left are some, again, storage. They've got some cage storage for some of their cones and other utility maintenance gear. You can see in the upper right, they do store quite a few material, a lot of materials and equipment on the ground outside along the east line, property line of the site. Their stored, their vehicle shop and storage bay is there on the lower left, and then their new building, their new vehicle storage building is shown on the lower right, and it actually is a fairly, fairly good storage building, although some of the longer vehicles and trailers won't fit within that building just because of its size limitations. You can see the site is quite congested. This is, in the upper left, this is the staff vehicles parked in the center of the site, so all of the maintenance vehicles actually have to circulate around with the staff vehicles to get in and out of the site. There's an exterior view, of course, as it looks from Anderson Avenue, and then their map and document storage is represented in the slide at the bottom of the screen. So their site, again, they have an office and vehicle storage building, which is the one was, which was the old fire station, and then a newer vehicle storage building along the east property line. And you can see the parking in the, represented in the center of the site is all staff parking, and then they park their vehicles along the perimeter and have to manipulate their way around. And that's what's highlighted here, and that, that orange area, number two, is where we have high volume of traffic and interference between staff cars and, and utility vehicles. A lot of conflict there. And also, these vehicles are constantly pulling out on Interstate Avenue, which is a rather busy intersection at that point. And again, you can see by the shopping center to the east and the residences to the west, there is limitation on what can happen for expansion at this site. So our report recommendations, we worked with effective management decisions. Roger Thompson was a consultant of ours who specializes in fleet maintenance facilities and other municipal facilities planning. He was with us as we did the analysis, and he came up with 24 different recommendations dealing with the four sites, things that can be done to streamline the operations of the, the fleet maintenance facilities for the city of Manhattan. As, as Rob mentioned, we found that each of the sites has significant shortcomings, both on size, configuration, access and ease of maneuverability, some of which are safety concerns, which I think the city needs to be made aware of. Overall, it was a recommendation that we look at doing a combined facility, which could give us greater flexibility in the way the operations are done and greater efficiencies and how we utilize vehicles, vehicle storage, perform maintenance and store materials. We did, after going through this process, doing the staff interviews, looking at the needs of the, of the different departments and reading the results of all of the interviews, we put together a building program based on industry standards and, and best practices in the industry, and came up with a combined facility that can answer the, all of the city's needs based on all of the 24 recommendations of 95,000 square feet located on a hypothetical 26-acre tract, and it was a cost of 20 to 25 million for that overall project, which we realized was a, a bit of a pill to swallow to, to find that out.
So Patrick kind of led you up to what their recommendations were on a hypothetical piece of ground, as well as just best management practices in, in municipal services. And we looked at that, we looked at the price tag, and as the first bullet says, we, we quickly realized that, okay, that's not something the community can afford, and we need to trim it back. So we began to work with Patrick. We said, okay, so what do we, what do we need to be in in terms of range of square feet for a number of employees and, and where do we, the same thing with square feet for shop for vehicle space, whether it be maintenance, training rooms, break rooms, and so on and so forth. That all goes into municipal services. We also trimmed back how many acres, and then we kind of came up with a cost range that we might be able to pare this down to that matches these dollar amounts. The other thing too, and I'll get to, I have a couple of slides coming up here, which is the park maintenance site to remain and move the forestry division to wherever the new location would be. It would remove numerous large vehicles and create space that the park maintenance folks need at that existing site. And I'll kind of go over that here in a second. Patrick had, so Patrick, in the, the big thick report that we gave you, and all the nice reading material to help you sleep at night, there was the theoretical 26 acres, 20 to 25 million in cost. Patrick's prepared two slides here. I don't know if Patrick, if you want to come up and kind of explain these two slides. This is kind of the reduced site onto the 14 acres, so.
Right. So, so what we've got here is our joint maintenance facility space comparison, as we call it. And what we did was, each of these items that are sort of in the lavender color, the smaller rectangles in these, represent approximately the amount of space that the city currently has in, in these departments. So item number one, this rectangle in here, the purple represents the amount of, total amount of administrative offices you have right now for all of those combined departments. The outline boundary, the stuff in the yellow and the purple is what our recommendation is based on the program we did, is what's needed to serve those sites. So, and I'll, I'll explain a little bit how we got to the shapes and configurations in a minute. Up here, number two, this purple represents all of the shops and indoor vehicle storage that the city now has for their various vehicles, and we're representing a, a need for an increase in that. Down here, this purple rectangle is the amount of fleet maintenance repair shops for the vehicles that you have right now. The consultant's recommendations that we have something in the range of the size that's blue around it, so a significant increase is needed in the amount of vehicle fleet maintenance space.
If you ever want to see a challenge, come down there when the guys are trying to work on a fire truck. It doesn't fit in there height-wise, and it doesn't fit in there length-wise, and it just really crunches the entire space. And that's, that's probably why that's the most significant change in square footage.
It is. And I'd say that, that many of the recommendations revolving around the fleet maintenance are not just area because of the number of vehicles you have, but they're based on safety. For instance, your welding shop now that's down at the city site, when you get a full-size vehicle in that shop and the welder's working in there, if there happens to be an accident, if there's a fire caused by welding, he's got no room to stand up and get away from it. And so we're suggesting that the welding shop needs to be significantly larger than it is now. The other thing that happens is, is volume-wise, as we mentioned, right now you lack any sort of hoisting facilities, any sort of loading docks. The crews at the city do a great job of managing their way through that, but if you get something that has to have a hydraulic worked on with a truck bed raised, there's no way to brace that with a hoist right now. It has to be blocked and/or lifted with some piece of equipment and held there while someone gets underneath it and works. Some real safety concerns that I think should be rectified. Let me go on and just explain these other two. The purple rectangle here represents the number of spreader racks. That's the salt spreaders that go on the back of the trucks for spreading salt. They're stored on racks. Right now, you have 12 of them. We're suggesting that you probably need at least 16 at this point. And this little purple dot down here is your current salt dome, and what we're recommending is a need for salt storage for the city at this time.
I think there's one more.
Yeah. So this is a site study that we did based on the program that we adjusted for a reduced facility, this one. This gets in the range of something over 40,000 square feet, and I'll quickly run through this for you. Again, it's a hypothetical site, but we're saying that if this is a street out here, this is visitor parking, and we've got employee parking up here. Employee parking is within a controlled gated area, and it's away from the vehicle parking for the, the maintenance vehicles, and we're securing the site with security gates here, here and here, so that the public can get into the main portion of the building, but there are no public vehicles that are allowed back here to the back of the site. Item number two, this one would be our administrative area at this point, and that would include the crew leaders and space for the crews to have some office space for completing the paperwork that they need to do. We've got some central part storage shown with a loading dock at this position, and some shown potential expansion in the future. One of the things that happens now is that when the folks need a part, they order it, they run to the auto parts store, they bring it back, they work on something. There's some real efficiencies to be able to keep a significant amount of parts onsite.
Maybe, maybe I misunderstood.
Yeah.
When, when you said that there would be no public vehicles behind the building, did you mean private?
I'm sorry, private vehicles.
Private, okay.
I'm thinking of the general public being there for private vehicles.
General, general public.
Just been processing. Okay, thanks.
Right, absolutely. So then, we'll go up here to the north. This area, number four, is some shop space, so the crews have some work space within the, within the building that is separate from the vehicle storage bays, so they have a place where they can have a workbench, some cage storage for their tools. Each crew can keep their stuff segregated, which they don't have now. Item six is indoor vehicle storage, and we recommend as much as possible on that because anything that's involved in snow removal, anything that holds water on a regular basis during the winter should really be stored inside, so it's available immediately in case of a snow emergency. So we're suggesting a significant amount of indoor vehicle storage, and we're showing expansion space. It would be outdoor storage now, but in the future, that building could be expanded for more indoor storage. We're showing an indoor wash bay at this point, so in those winter months, the trucks can be brought inside and hosed off to get the salt off the vehicles and make them last longer. We've got an out, space for an outdoor, what's called a hardstand, the place where you can knock the chunks off more or less outside before you bring them into a wash bay. We've got a couple of areas of outdoor vehicle storage which is covered. Again, we talked about the spreader racks, salt storage. This would be bins for the various mulches and gravels and things, the bulk materials that you keep. We've got some fenced, secured stor, outdoor storage for things that can be stored on the ground outside, but they would be within another layer of security, so they could be requisitioned out of there. Hopefully, fewer things would walk off. And then we've got a fueling bay up here to the north side, so the vehicles could come out, fuel, and then go on their way.
Okay. Thank you, Patrick. So I mentioned previously about, okay, so we did have, I think in the main report, we have an appraisal of all four sites and what the land value of those four sites were. We're recommending that three of the four locations, once that, once we have a site selected, a new facility stood up, that we would go out and market these, either request proposals or do prep work. I think Commissioner Dodson, you had asked some questions about what would be the cost to, to say, you know, clear all the buildings and, and make them ready for a sale. That's certainly something we can work on. There's other options too that we could, could consider as well, whether we'd accept proposals and see if folks would want to use the existing buildings. Again, each of these have different advantages, obviously, street and fleet. You know, it does have a traffic signal, it doesn't have frontage on Fort Riley Boulevard, but it definitely has good access with the traffic light. 3131 Anderson's adjacent to an existing shopping area. That may be more attractive to some of the, the existing owners in there, and we've tried to talk to some folks over the years. So with that, oh, I'm sorry.
Just one, one more follow-up while you're on this slide. And that had to do with, do we know of any remediation requirements that might have to be done, particularly down on the city shops?
No. So we had done a phase one environmental assessment on each of those, and Patrick, I don't remember anything that would require, I think, a remediation.
No, there was nothing in the phase one.
Yeah. So I don't recall that we need to excavate, pick up contaminated soil and haul it off. I don't remember anything at all in those phase ones.
We have a fueling station down there, and that place has been down there a long time, so you just never know.
It's been down there a long time, and we also get inspected every single year. And staff does a great job with KDHE on those reports. Funding, so I might have to look to Kyle for any help on this, but we tried to put together a $12 million facility, and how could we possibly structure it moving forward? As you can see, there's numerous funds that we're looking to tap that are enterprise, such as water, wastewater and stormwater, as well as special street and highway fund, as well as a little bit of special park and rec fund as well. And then the remainder being in a 20-year bond for, for the facility over 20 years. I guess I really want to get into my questions, and what I guess I'm looking for in terms of direction tonight is, do you agree that it's time to move forward with a joint facility? Do you agree that the existing locations are, I guess, inadequate and, and don't function for their intended purpose into the future for the city? And if the answer is yes, then I guess I'm looking for, I guess, some guidelines for me to go out and begin soliciting with individual property owners and begin, I guess, getting some at least initial negotiation numbers with, with the following criteria. Some of the things that I put together was, you know, should, one of my goals is try and get as close as possible to 14 acres. Land as central as possible, that's very difficult, however, that being a goal. The other thing that I put up there that I think that is important is that we don't go after land that has a current business on it, that's generating sales tax. I don't think any of you are interested in going after land like that. I know I'm not. That's the same with a property that's generating property tax. So with... So, with that, I guess those are some of my questions. You know, I'm really to the end of my presentation, and I'm hoping to have some discussion with each of you or the majority of you in what your preference would be. I will tell you that the scope and fee for BBN, we're pretty much at the end for phase one, and if you want us to use their team to help evaluate and bring back to you three or four sites, I already have at least two or three in mind of conversations I've had. I think we need to evaluate, have some evaluation criteria for those sites, and then bring that back to you. So, with that, Mayor, Commissioners, myself, or Patrick will stand for any questions.
Yeah, I have a couple. On the, and I apologize because you might have mentioned this because you were just on that slide. In the new facility, the plan for it, how close is that whole facility to 14 acres already?
Oh, not even close. So, if you were to add, if you were to add each of the acreages of all four sites, you're at 4.97.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we, essentially, if we found a 14-acre pot of land, there would be plenty of room to grow.
And that's, that's my point, is, and as the budget allows, build as much covered enclosed space as possible, but have room for expansion and growth as budgets in future years allow to add either more maintenance bays, because the city's grown and there's more vehicles to maintain, or covered parking, or more storage bins, or more wash bays, whatever the need is. When we designed and did the traffic shop, Commissioner, we kind of designed it so there's kind of two houses. There's an administrative and technology side on the west side, and there's an operations side. And we kind of positioned the building where it is down there on 11th Street, such that we can expand and grow in both directions, depending upon what the need is in terms of added staff or more operations. And I think what Patrick has tried to propose is that we can grow into that 14 acres.
Okay, that's, that's, I just wanted-
Does that help, sir?
Yeah, no, absolutely. And then, the, and this might, this is more of a finance question. If we move forward with this and then sold those lots of land, that $1.6 million, would that go back to paying off the bonds directly, or would that go back into the general fund?
I would assume-
Or is that up to us?
I'm, I'm gonna, it, it's our money. I would assume Bernie, it would come into the general fund. So, come into the general fund and obviously discretion there.
And, oh, yeah. I remember when I toured the facility on Juliet, you also, it seemed as though there was a bit of a technology issue.
Sure.
Does this, does this new facility address kind of the concerns we have from a facility setting as a building, but also just kind of the internal infrastructure that you guys need in terms of computers and things like that?
So, my intent would be, you know, depending on where the location is, you know, we've been, we've been slowly growing our fiber network to various buildings to get them connected back to the server. To answer your question, yes. We certainly want to make sure the training room has the correct AV equipment. The other thing too is everything has become pretty much electronic for our employees, everything from their W2s, paychecks, time sheets, you know, just, I mean, just everything is, is really electronic. What, one of, one of the communities that I've toured, what they do a lot of times is they provide a room that has multiple computers in it. That computer isn't assigned to me, but the 20 or 30 different employees, they can get on that computer, they can check their email, they can check and do their time sheet and stuff. They have a centralized printer. That's what a lot of, Lenexa being the one that I toured, that's what they did.
And that's a part of this $12 million plan?
Yep.
Okay. And then, my last question is, with the breakdown of the recommended annual payment and though some of those funds coming out of the water, wastewater, and stormwater fund, how does that impact those funds' balance sheets moving forward? Because I, I know there's a lot of big projects, in particular, especially stormwater, that we are looking at. So, was this already kind of thought about when we were projecting those totals, or is this going to have a big impact on that?
I don't think they'll have a huge impact, but they'll certainly have to be put into the forecast sheets. Are they in there today? I don't believe they're in there today, but they, we would have to program in there. Water and wastewater most likely can absorb that entire amount. We'd have to make a decision on stormwater-
Yeah, that's the one I was more concerned about.
Whether we should do four-year temp notes. You also, I guess, I remind the Commission that we just recently changed our methodology in which stormwater rates are collected, and we'll have some more data, probably even at the end of this year, on how that, that fund is performing.
That is one thing that I think that I would definitely like to see, if we move forward, what the projected totals of the stormwater fund would be. Yeah, just because we, we have some major projects that we need to do out of that one.
If you remember, the facility studies for both water and wastewater plant, they have some pretty-
Yeah, that, those two, yeah. Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Well, the, as to the questions, I've toured all the sites. The one on Anderson being new, you know, it's just got some conflict issues, but the other two, to me, are unsatisfactory. They're unsafe, they're not efficient. And I think, you know, when you, I don't know how you do this, Patrick, maybe, and you've got experience doing this, but there'll be some efficiencies gained, whether it's in terms of hours or being able to fix something the first time, all those kind of things that you gain from having a more modern facility. The delta, another delta, of course, will be the distance, and if you just figure whatever it is, 50 cents a mile, you might, that might be an expense that would be an add rather than a decrease. But overall, I think you'll gain quite a bit of operational efficiency in a consolidated new site where you can pull in, pull out, and get everybody under the same thing. A lot of, a lot of synergy will be achieved as well. I would like to see us have a 14-acre site that is, I think we ought to do the looking The, the difficulty is going to be reconciling the cost of this with kind of where we're going to get the money and the timing of it all. But whatever we do, you know, we ought to go out and take a look at it and see what the art of the possible is. I'd also like to see us, you know, make sure that the access issue is addressed, where you get off the highway, onto the highway, whether they're going to create any issues there. And then, if there's possibilities for expansion of the 14 acres beyond that. And then, I think whatever we do, we're going to have to kind of have a planned phased occupation. In other words, move one site in at a time. Otherwise, we're going to have quite a bit of difficulty managing. I mean, it'll be seasonal as well as each one of the departments trying to orchestrate its own move a little at a time. So, yeah, I'm on board with this, and I think, you know, Patrick, you've had, your company's had enough experience doing this that you can kind of right-size what we need to do. And I, we had talked earlier about drive-in, drive-out, so in some of those, you can, like the garages, we just drive in one side, out the other, go get fuel and take off. So, and the indoor wash rack, I think, will save us a lot of money in having vehicles rusted out too early. So, I, I think it's a, a good idea to look at the, our big decision, of course, will be the, the timing and when we want to lay this on.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Just generally, I'm supportive. I've seen the shops that our city crews have to work in and how confining they are. The one on Anderson is not there in that same category for me as the other three are, because we have invested quite a bit in that shop in recent years. We've laid a lot of concrete, we've built a, well, it's a shed, but it's a nice long one. It's not an old shed.
But, but we, again, we shrunk it-
Yeah.
-in terms of length because of the available space-
Yeah.
-and we have minimum drive aisles. That, that's always been my frustration with all this, but go ahead, Mayor.
I agree that you would have put on that site what you could-
Yeah.
-given the limitations. So, I understand. I do have some concerns about what we would do with the land that we would be vacating and how we could maximize that. I would, is it possible that we have ownership of the 14 acres that we're going to need or that we would have to buy it? I'd prefer if something the city already owns-
Okay.
-a ray for us. I don't, I don't like buying more land, and, and sometimes we don't get the best price for things that we try to sell. But I do have some concerns about, and I, I think it's the BBN report on, and it's the section called environmental reports, and it does speak to the Juliet site, holds the potential for released contamination, which is considered a recognized environmental condition, and there are repeated references to recognized environmental condition, which means that once we try to vacate it, that land is contaminated, and we already have some like that. That's what the traffic control bill, uh, uh, unit is on, is some of that land that we couldn't have done anything else with. So, are we going to have these three extra sites? I'm not, I, I heard Rob say we're not going to be hauling things off, trying to mitigate it, but it is problematic, isn't it, having these recognized sites?
Right now, there, there are things on each of those sites that have the potential for release to those. As of right now, they haven't identified anything that is a leaking problem, and as Rob said, the fuel tanks and things have been inspected. So, unless something happens to those and they start releasing, if you were to sell that property today, you're, you're fine based on the phase one, but there is a potential there.
I think it's the long-term history of the sites.
Right.
It's not just necessarily what we have done. I doubt we've poured gas and oil out, but years ago, when, if this, and these sites were used for oil and gas, I think. So, I, I would not be surprised to see that we run into that.
And the one that probably had the most, that was the most problematic in those reports is the one where the park shops are-
Uh-huh.
-because there have been some investigations there about some things that have been surrounding that site, not necessarily on that site.
But I, I don't know how that's going to slow us down in our plans, because that will come into play when we try to dispose of those properties in some way, and selling them for the market price would be the best expectation, and that would help us with this financing scenario that we're talking about here. So, I also want us to think about some phasing, and if we can. And I don't know exactly what I'm asking, but we are talking about a significant $12 million, and it could be that we could phase some of that into the, build some of it now and some of it later. I don't know what I'm really proposing, because I don't have a specific proposal other than, it, it would seem that that would be a possibility, especially when we look at some of the things that are out at that, on, on Anderson, that aren't urgent or as urgent as some of the facilities that we're using. And I agree that the maintenance facility and repair for the vehicles has, I had a tour of it when I was first elected, and they're, they can't, anyway. There are just vehicles they can't work on there, and they have to send them away, and, you know, it's all time-consuming, and it's out, if it's fire engine, it's Kansas City, and, you know, it's one delay after another. That would seem much more efficient if we were able to tend to adhere. So, generally, you know, the devil's in the details, and yes, you've brought a lot of them here, a lot of the details, but, you know, we'll be looking carefully in the future too, so, thank you.
Mayor, one, one comment. When we're talking about the West Anderson site-
Yeah.
-you know, we did invest a couple of years ago, we built that storage building. One thing we didn't reflect on the site plan for the new proposed site or what it could occur, we've talked to those who built that building, we can't move it, and it's something we could look at and probably would look at if we were to end up selling that site. So, I mean, the big deal with that site, like you said, we, we have some storage there, it's just space. I mean, it was an old fire station, and it's, it's kind of like a jigsaw puzzle when they're pulling in and out of there, but, but I just wanted you to be aware of that building we have looked at, because we did invest in it, it can be moved.
What can be moved? The built, the new shed could be moved.
Yeah, the one we built late 2014, 2015.
I was thinking you were talking about that fire station.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, okay, good.
No, we're not moving the fire station.
Not going to move, I hope not. Okay. The other question I had is, you know, we have a trail that goes right by there, and of course, we're interested in, in making, maximizing that as, whatever, as much as we can.
Go ahead.
When, when and if we sell that property, I'd like for us to retain some easements and, and do what we need to do with that property that would, that would benefit our trail system. And the other thing about that property is, that is, if we are ever in, and I don't think it'll be in my lifetime, but somebody's lifetime, if we ever do a bridge over Wildcat, that is an extension of, that would be an extension of Reith Avenue to get down to Wildcat and get across over to the, to the other side. So, maybe we need a right-of-way of some kind. Okay, thanks.
Actually, your trail comment's a very good one. I don't think we have any intent of disconnecting that link. I think that's an important link for the overall system, so how that comes to fruition and final sale and configuration, we're not going to delete that link.
We might want to make it a little wider.
We might make it a little wider. Commissioner, ready?
Yes, so, as I read through the documents, I'm glad you at least attempted to partner up with Kansas State University and USD 383. I hope we continue to look at other areas like that, whether it's Fort Riley or private industries or whatever it might be. I think it's always good to have a collaborative piece when we're talking about facilities, because these are things that most organizations, such as Case State or other organizations, would use for vehicles. So, I want us to not rule that completely out and keep that on the forefront as far as other industries that are coming in that we can, that may want to use this space or rent, or however that works. I don't know how that collaboration piece works. I do think we need to move to one facility, so I'm in agreement with that. We have so many projects coming in, are, coming to us, and they're all in the millions. So, we have the airport parking lot, and we have maybe an Aggieville garage, and we might, you know, we have all of these things that are in the millions of dollars. And as we try to figure out how we're going to do projects, some kind of a priority list, so they're not all, and a priority, I understand, like, right now, some of these things are unsafe, but let's see how much one needs to come before the other. And I know everybody has their pet projects, and everybody thinks theirs is the most important, but it's not good for taxpayers, and it's not good for us. I would like to see, because it's 12 million, I don't know if you can do this, to bring it down to one single-digit million, like 9 million, maybe 9,900, something, something, something. If we can rule some, some things out, maybe a conference room here and there, I don't know what that would look like, but if we can just cut that price tag down to either 9 or 10 million, it doesn't seem that significant, but because there are so many projects that are in the millions of dollars, I think it's a, it's a, it's a huge burden. But I, I do appreciate all the work that's gone into it. I think it's high time we did do something like this, and one of the reasons would, to do it quicker is because everything might get expend, get expensive as you move forward, but that's going to be true for any project we start. So, just have departments talk to each other. So, that's, that's where I stand on this. I think the plans are wonderful. I think you need bigger spaces for the vehicles. It shouldn't be the way it is, and it's outgrown, everything that we've stood for. You know more about the sites and land space in Manhattan and in the surrounding area. Is this something we can also work with Riley County or Potawatomi County? I don't know if that's possible or not. Some of those areas have more land than we do, so I don't know what that looks like.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ball?
Yeah, my thoughts on this, you know, the, the city shops inadequate, I've always felt that way. That's just a disaster down there to have to work on that Juliet one. That, that's your worst role. And so, using that as a starting off point, what, what I would do is recommend that, you know, we find a site, because that's, that's number one, we got to find a site. If you can find the, you know, 12 to 14 acres, great. And then, what I would do is incrementally, because, see, this would impact the financing of this, is to, you know, put the city shops there- of this, is to, you know, put the city shops there. And if you can add the forestry or something like that, you know, to it, fine. But the Anderson Avenue site, you know, while it might not be adequate for the folks you got in there now, maybe Parks and Rec could use that. And, and what I'm, I'm getting into operations here, but if you, you shuffle a little bit, it might be quite adequate. Cause I, you know, I know, you know, Annenberg Park's pretty close, Seco Park's pretty close. You got Lee Mill Park and, and other things. And so it, it might be quite useful. And since we already put some money in there, you know, I would look at that, that might lower your cost. Uh, the downside is, you know, that building's probably worth more than the other ones when you go to selling it. Cause you, you had that listed at over 600,000. So that, that hurts us on that.
Like an appraiser, not, not Rob.
But, uh, but, but I think if you did it that way, it would address some of the concerns. I, I agree with Commissioner Ready, you know, you know, 12 million dollars is a lot. But if we could get the land, you know, take the worst of it, the city shops and get that fixed. And then slowly move the other things and maybe adjust what Parks and Rec's doing will be all right. A lot of people are gonna choke on a, you know, price tag of 12 million. But if we can phase it in slowly and use those other funds, so, so it doesn't really, you know, impact our mill levy, that would be excellent.
Okay, thank you.
I also realize I did a really poor job of answering your questions while I was asking questions. Um, so one, yeah, I, I absolutely agree that we need to start looking to the future and combining these facilities. And I agree with the other commissioners, especially the Juliette shop. Now, we have to do something about that. Two, also, yes. On three, so the, in terms of negotiating a fee and a scope with a consulting firm, by us saying yes to three, are we implicitly saying also yes to whatever fee you agree on? Or does that come back to us again?
No, absolutely, that would, I, I would assume that would most likely be more than 10,000, greater than Ron's authority. Would have to come back to the commission.
I was just making sure that'd be the same process and, okay.
I need to, honestly, I need to assess my workload and my team's workload and my, my division and department on whether we can tackle this or not. You all have seen the seven pages I've submitted for goals for 2018. So we have a lot of projects on the books, but this is an important one. So I need to assess whether I need BBM help or not. And I most likely will and we'll have to work through that scope.
Um, so then, yes, on all three, um, the only note that I would make is I would like to see how this affects the stormwater, wastewater and water funds.
Yep.
Um, and then I would also, if there, if there is a way that we can do a more phased approach, um, I, 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 cause the 12 million dollar price tag is a big number, but it's probably a number we really can't get around. So if it's one that we can break, go, break up over years, um, it's a lot easier to sell and a lot more manageable for the taxpayers. So, um, if there is a way that we can make this more phased, I'd like to see that. And I know that in some levels, you're already working to do that. But if there's anything else that we could do, it'd be appreciated.
All right, Mayor, thank you. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Rob. Does the public have comments? Is there anything you'd like to add to the presentation we've heard? Please come forward, state your name. Saying no one, I'll close that public comment period. Uh, the next item on the agenda is to consider or receive a presentation on the park at Lee Mill Heights master plan.
And Mayor, to start off this particular item, we have a little bit of, we have a guest, Brian Leaders with the National Park Service, who has some recognition he'd like to give to the city. The National Park Service was a partner in this Lee Mill Heights master plan. And, uh... Brian, welcome.
I'm gonna step in real quick, if you don't mind.
Okay, go for it.
I'm gonna have a little bit to say during Wyatt's presentation, but through help of staff, they got me to speak before Wyatt. That doesn't happen very often. But as a partner in the Lee Mill Heights project, the National Park Service, we're, I, I guess I would like to say that we're, we feel that we're over the top on this project. It's an awesome project. What we got to do, what we got to be involved in, um, in the result, I think what you will see in this presentation is awesome and you should be very proud. What I'd like to do is give an award to our friend Wyatt. Wyatt has led this project. Typically, when we as partners get involved, we help lead a project because a lot of times we get in, in a project where partners aren't sure how to go about this or how to move forward. Wyatt is a huge asset to the city and he's a huge asset to his office. And he's a huge asset to the project. And we're riding on his coattails, quite honestly. So, um, what this is, is a Partner in Excellence Award from the RTCA program. I'm out of the Omaha office, but this is recognized nationally. So we'll put this on our national website. So Wyatt, just to recognize you, like to thank you for everything you've done and for having us involved, but also for leading the project and doing such a great job.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
On behalf of the city commission as a whole, we'd like to just congratulate you for such outstanding work.
Well, thank you.
And I think we have had the opportunity to review the master plan and it's very impressive. And so having the National Park Service representative come from Omaha is a big deal.
Yes, yes, it has been.
And so congratulations.
Well, thank you. So we can go home now.
We're pleased. Now we can go home, right?
That's, yeah. I, I can't top that. So, uh, thank you very much, Brian. Thank you commissioners for, for reviewing the plan. Um, I do know it was, it was a lengthy plan. Um, I think it had more pictures in it than the plan you just reviewed with Public Works. So hopefully the pictures made it a bit of an entertaining read for you. As we get started talking about the details of, of that plan, I wanna take a step back real quick and just, and recognize the partnerships that brought that together. Obviously, you see the big Parks and Rec and National Park Service logos. I'll introduce Brian again here in a second to talk a little bit more detail about what, what, what his involvement was. Um, but obviously lots of local partners came to the table to bring this plan together as well. Um, we relied on, on Public Works and Community Development, obviously. So there was some internal collaboration, um, as well as Schultz, uh, real estate development and construction. Really, really part of the reason we have the park is through their generosity and donation. Um, the Kansas Native Plant Society, the Kansas Forest Service, Manhattan Trail Works, the Kansas Trails Council out of Topeka, Amanda Arnold Elementary School students, a variety of departments from Kansas State University, uh, the Flint Hills Discovery Center, US Fish and Wildlife. Um, I'm sure there's some others that participated at various times in the process. But, but the, the intent with, with these local partnerships was to go out and, and find the expertise that we needed to input into specific areas of this plan. We knew we couldn't do it totally by ourselves. We knew we could lead it, but we knew that we needed some outside expertise and, and that we have a great resource locally to do that. And so thank you to all, all of those individuals and organizations that participated. Several of them are here tonight and so they may choose to speak during public comment if you'll, if you'll allow them to. And so then, I'll introduce Brian again, Leaders with the National Park Service, was a great partner with us in, in this, in, uh, in the, the project and provided a lot of insight and, uh, and helpful guidance along the way. So I'll give him a chance to talk about what he does and what he did for the, for the plan.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. It's a, it's a project that we got involved with about two years ago. And so why are we involved? Why are we here? A lot of times people ask, well, we don't have a national park in our area and why, why is the Park Service involved? So a little bit about our program. Our program is called RTCA Rivers, Trails and Conservation Assistance. What we do is we work with community groups, local and state governments to develop outdoor recreation programs and projects. We get involved with nonprofits specifically, um, so we can get involved with communities. A lot of times we work with small interest groups. Um, and that's where we, I guess, shine the most because the small interest groups are in need of assistance and don't have someone like Wyatt to lead this or, or have staff like, like you have to, to do this. But a lot of times, uh, bringing the Park Service into a project like this also gives a different perspective on a project and a little bit more of a national perspective, you might say. So that's where I have been honored to be a part of this project and to be able to help out and to work through the, the interesting site itself. We are through, we are available through an application program. Uh, we accept applications each year. It's a written application that Wyatt submitted. Uh, we accept those applications at the first, uh, well, we accept them in August and then we start our fiscal year October 1. And so a project can receive our assistance from one to two years. Sometimes we'll stretch that out a little bit longer depending on where the project is. What we like to do is help provide project guidance as needed. We don't get involved to do the work for the partners we're involved with. We are there to help them along and guide them. Um, and like I said, Wyatt's done a great job of leading and the rest of the staff here at the city has done an awesome job as well. We do provide some planning assistance. We don't do anything that would take away from our friends that work at architectural engineering firms, but we do help move a project to the point of where then those architects and engineers can get involved. We also help with meeting facilitation. And again, I think everything I'm saying Wyatt can do. But being able to help out with that also helped with bringing other people to the table. Uh, when the, when the National Park Service gets involved, I think a lot of people think, wow, that's really cool. Um, and, and having them involved may elevate this project to a new level. And that's what we like to see. We like to see people get interested in a project because we have interest in this project. The reason we have interest in this project, as we all know, uh, many of our youth are not experiencing the outdoors as they should. They're not being health-conscious. They're really not outdoors at all. Most of the time they go to school, they come home, they do their homework, they're on their computers or their internet or what have you, and then they go back to school again. And so we're about getting kids outdoors, getting them healthy, letting them experience their outdoors. The Lee Mill Heights project is, is exactly what we want to see in communities like you have. And I have to, um, thank Tim as well for being a big part of this and donating the land and wanting to see this through to fruition. Many a times projects, our land gets donated and the, the donor walks away and says it's all yours now. And, and that's not the case here either. So the interest goes very deep. And I think, uh, this park can be a big part of the heart of Manhattan. And I think it can become a very, uh, important part of what your park system becomes. So thank you for having me. Maybe I'll have a comment toward the end as well. But thanks for having me to be a part of it and thanks to Wyatt for letting me be involved. Thank you.
Brian is right on with the, the partners that, that he was able to help guide us to. And then, and we'll talk about that, that and some other involvement in a little bit. But, but definitely was a, was a benefit to the, to the project. So, um, as a, as kind of an agenda for tonight, we'll focus on really the report outline. Um, it has, it has eight basic chapters. Uh, the first five are kind of our, our background and process that we went through. And we'll kinda have one slide per chapter to kinda summarize what, what work we did there. Then chapter six is, is the, we call it the final concept. This is a draft plan. Um, and so we're, we're still taking feedback from you all in the community. But the, the final concept, chapter six, is kinda where we get into what we think the park would look like in the future. Uh, seven is how we would envision getting there in terms of funding and phasing. And then eight is a management strategy for how we would take care of this property in the long term. And then at the end of that, we'll have some discussion. So as a, as a background, uh, the park at Lee Mill Heights is in southwest Manhattan. Um, south, this is Annenberg Park. This is Scenic Drive here. This is the Miller Ranch and Lee, Lee Mill Heights area. And so this is then is zoomed in on the park. This is Miller Parkway that drives right through the center of the parks. We have 75 acres south of Miller Parkway and 15 acres north of Miller Parkway in the Ledge Stone Ridge area. And then just some, some shots of what that, that area looks like. There's open prairie, there's woodlands. Um, it's, it's really a neat place to explore and we've spent a lot of time exploring and, and trying to find those special places out there. Uh, we did some analysis and some research into the history of the site. Um, there is some evidence on the site that, that there was some, uh, use by native peoples before European settlement. And we've done some preliminary archaeological investigations. There are no, there's no burial sites that we think of, but, but there is evidence of use, which we think is an important part of the story. Then during, during the westward expansion in Kansas settlement, uh, Military Trail did not run through the park, but ran just south of the park. And so the, the report talks about how, you know, we can envision soldiers on that trail maybe getting off the trail and exploring or camping in the area of where the park is now. Then the, the land changed hands a few times through that period, but eventually came into the hands of, of the Miller family and became part of the Miller Ranch, which we know is a subdivision where thousands of people call homes. It used to be a thousand acre horse ranch in the Flint Hills. And so this is Sam Miller and his horse Ginger. Uh, they're not on the park property. He's actually standing on, on a, a different part of their ranch. Uh, but they, that family owned the, this land for quite some time. Um, and the two of the, two of their children were, were a part of the process and gave us some of their, their insights and memories of growing up on this property, which was, which was a real treat to, to hear. Then the, changed hands a few more times through, through various development agreements. And, and finally, Tim and Angie Schultz, uh, came in possession of most of this property as, as they started developing. And, and their, and Tim's dad, Roger, started developing the Lee Mill Heights area subdivisions and surrounding subdivisions in that part of town, um, which led to them donating and, and purchase agreements for a majority of that parkland. So then you see the map, the, how we acquired that property from 2008 to 2016, bits and pieces here and there, um, to get it to a total of the 93 acres that represents the park today. And there's a lot more detail in the, in the report, as you know. But, uh, we, we did spend a lot of time on the site. Um, you know, different, different partners, different stakeholders touring around, uh, kind of exploring. Uh, we also did some analy, analysis using GIS. And so we mapped things, uh, a lot of things. We mapped soils and topography and slope and views onto the site, off of the site, um, wind and sun exposure. There's some zoning and airport regulations that we mapped. And then the reason we did all that inventory then was we then overlaid those maps together, added, multiplied and came up with areas of suitability. So places that were the most suitable for building trails had certain characteristics. Areas that were the most suitable for building structures, like a picnic shelter or a restroom, had certain characteristics. And so we identified what we thought those were and then mapped those out to develop, to determine where those things would make the most sense, where they'd be the most cost-effective to build, where we'd have the best opportunity, uh, to use the park in those, in those different ways. Community engagement was a critical part of, of the entire planning process. Throughout this process, we hosted four public meetings, a couple of them on the site, which, which were very successful. We had an online survey that almost 400 residents participated in. We had review by advisory boards throughout the process. Uh, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, the Arts and Humanities Advisory Board and the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee all weighed in on the process. We also held four free of public events in the park to attract attention, to introduce people to the park and the resource that was there and have fun and also talk about, oh yeah, by the way, we're doing a plan. And it, it worked really, really well. We had 500 people attend these different events at the park throughout the past couple of years. Really great reviews from those events. The red cedar holiday harvest was one of those that some of you might be familiar with. It was a, a strategy to get people into the park, remove red cedar trees, which is a management goal for the park, uh, take home a Christmas tree, um, and just enjoy that, that experience. Incredibly successful event with, with partners and, or recreation staff as well as community sponsors. Uh, we also held a student workshop with students from Amanda Arnold Elementary and a lot of our partners were involved. Uh, we developed a program over about eight or nine weeks where every other week we went to the school, worked with those kids, taught them different aspects of the planning process, history, biology, archaeology, uh, design, landscape architecture, planning. And then they came up with their own designs for, uh, for the park. And we did incorporate some of their, their vision into the final plan. And we can talk in more detail about that aspect, um, tonight or, or afterwards, if you'd like to hear more about that project. But, um, really, really fun opportunities to hear from the public. And they told us what, what, what they wanted. We heard, we got a lot of good, good feedback. Uh, we developed kind of a top 10 list of things that, that the public said they wanted to incorporate. We developed kind of a top 10 list of things that the public said they wanted to incorporate. And really, it was about keeping the park natural with the ability to access it. And so a lot of focus on hiking trails, a lot of focus on prairie preservation, a lot of focus on the ability to explore the park in those ways. But they also wanted things like restrooms and places for kids to play, and, you know, places to have a picnic, and places, opportunities to learn about the landscape that they were seeing. And so we kind of took all of those 10 things as well as some other input that we heard and started developing some concepts for what that park would look like. So we went through a conceptual design process. We developed multiple concepts for different areas of the park as well as the park overall in terms of how trails would connect to those different areas. We incorporated some of the kids' work. We had this poster at one of our public meetings that kind of showcased the students' work, and then kind of conceptually looked at how trail systems could connect not only this neighbor, not only the park to itself, but also the park to the surrounding neighborhoods, and how could we get the most people to the park through this planning process. So we took those concepts out to the public, they gave us feedback. We then responded with what we're calling the final plan that's in Chapter Six. So this is an image of what that overall recommended plan looks like. Again, 93 acres, 84 acres of that is to remain natural area undeveloped with the exception of trail networks, and then nine acres would be developed areas of what you might think of as a more traditional park-type landscape. And then seven miles of pathways and trails are proposed. The green area is the park that we've seen in previous slides. The black lines are the proposed trail networks that really follow the ridge lines and follow the contour of the landscape. The pink area down here is not part of the park but is area where we have pedestrian easement, and so you'll notice that some of those black trail lines extend beyond the park into those pedestrian easements in order to connect those neighborhoods, in order to add length to trail. This is the Scenic Meadows subdivision. This is part of the early Lee Mill Heights subdivision. This little triangle right here is the VMI tract that we talked about previously and hopefully we'll get to talk about again. But you see how these neighborhoods get connected to the park through that trail network. And then to the north, we start to connect all of these neighborhoods as well as all the way to Annenberg Park and those residents that surround that park back to this park. So that connectivity was a real important piece for us. Then these notes here are calling out specific areas where we dived into a little bit more detail in our concept planning. We have the Loma Ridge entrance, the Miller Parkway entrance, the Ledge Stone Ridge open space. The white dots are opportunities for scenic overlooks where we think there might be, maybe it's a simple bench that has a good view out to Conza Prairie or to even to K-State Campus, top of the world at Marlet Park. The airport overlook is a great sight. You can watch the airplanes come in and take off or land. You can almost reach up and touch them. They're coming in so low over the top of you. And so we think that's an opportunity at that site where maybe it's a little bit more of a developed overlook area where we can kind of tell the story of the airport from afar, so you understand what you're looking at as you sit in the park and watch that activity down in the valley below. So this is our proposal for the Loma Ridge entry point. This is Loma Ridge coming into the park, and then this area would be one of those developed areas. This idea came as part of a neighborhood entrance to the park. One of the first public meetings identified this idea of a neighborhood versus a community kind of entrance. And so this is viewed as the neighborhood entrance where it's more walkable, it's connected to more homes. There's a smaller, small parking area and kind of a cul-de-sac turnaround, a kind of circular trail pathway that loops around. So if you just were out for a walk some evening, you could walk down here, loop through the park and head back out to home. There's also trail connections that would take you off in different areas into the park to explore further. There's a playground space, a restroom, a picnic shelter, a demonstration prairie garden where we could plant plants and have labels and some interpretive signage to help people understand what that landscape is all about. And then a nature play path that kind of loops through the prairie with a tall grass maze for kids to explore here in the center of that. And so lots of opportunities for play, lots of opportunities for kind of a starting point for your exploration. And then on the right side are some images of what we think that park entrance area playground might look like. And then this bottom image is kind of from the park looking back towards that entrance, what you'd see as you were walking back out to go home after you're visiting the park. So again, kind of some visioning of what that area might look like in the future. The second area we looked at was the area along Miller Parkway, and so this is Miller Parkway, kind of cutting through at the top of the page. This is the community entrance to the park. So things are a little bit bigger, we can accommodate more vehicles. In the parking lot, about 60 cars would fit in this parking lot. We have kind of a hardscape entry plaza with a labyrinth maze seating area in the center, so an outdoor classroom space for groups to come and gather. Restrooms, picnic shelter overlook in this area that kind of overlooks the valley and incorporates those necessary functions. And then here in the background, you see the entrance to a playground feature, which is in the center part of the site. It's kind of set up in these paddocks, kind of referencing that horse ranch history of the site. So we've got this entry paddock, we've got the play paddock, and then we've got this open lawn paddock on the east end. The center area is a playground, butterfly garden, some buffer from the street, more overlook opportunities for the kids to experience that view. And then the third space is this large circle lawn where a number of activities and different events could be staged with another scenic overlook and a trellis-type structure forming that overlook that would have you looking off towards the southwest. And then of course, trail connectivity back to Loma Ridge and to other areas of the site. One of the things that we've talked about at this entrance location here, this is intended to line up with whatever future development occurs on this side of the road, so we'd have an intersection that made sense there. We've also had some conversations with the neighboring landowner here, and I think the intent would be for the master plan to be flexible enough to respond to whatever that developer/landowner might do in the future. And so depending on timing of development, timing of the park, I think we'd be open to conversations about how those entrances can line up, how access can occur, and still, you know, maintain access for both us and those adjacent landowners. The third area that we looked at more closely was the Ledge Stone Ridge open space. This is on the north side of Miller Parkway, which is down here at the south, at the bottom of the screen. This is just to the west of the area we were looking at before. This is the Ledge Stone Ridge Trail, which is existing. It's a paved pathway that goes down to Miller Parkway. And we really envision this area as everybody's, the community's backyard. A lot of the neighborhood doesn't have true backyards because of the topography and how things slope away so quickly out their back doors. And so this is an opportunity where we could have irrigated turf grass and have things like soccer, throw a frisbee or catch a ball, have different kinds of activities on that flat lawn area, and then other trails and things to explore kind of beyond that point. Chapter Seven gets into kind of the implementation, and obviously this is a phased approach. We can't do this all overnight, all at once in a single project. We would recommend, based on community feedback, kind of, Phase One is actually a lump of a lot of projects, and so even Phase One will take multiple years to complete. But we would envision completing the, starting the Loma Ridge entry first, developing some trails over time, maybe a couple segments a year, starting that prairie restoration, removing cedars and restoring prairie, as well as development and completion of this Loma Ridge open space, which has already been started with previous Public Works projects. Phase Two would be some more development at those two sites to sort of round out the amenities that are there. Phase Three would be the Miller Parkway entrance, that community entrance, and Phase Four would be kind of wrapping up some loose ends from those other projects. Obviously, the timing of those projects is dependent on funding availability, which is in your hands as you set budgets and CIPs for the future. So we don't have a specific timeline necessarily for when all of that would occur. We do have $100,000 that's available in 2018 to get something started, and we do have $100,000 CIP proposed for 2019 to continue that development that you may have a chance to review as we get into budget talks. We list several funding sources in the planning document. Obviously, there's internal funds, budgeted funds, quality-of-life sales tax could potentially fund some of the trails. I do think we want to be careful about, you know, we don't want to dedicate all of those funds to one site. We want to make sure we spread those funds around, but it is available to help out with some trail funding. And then donations, as we've already seen, and grants. We list a number of grant agencies that like to fund projects like these that we could tap into. The draft document did not have costs. We did, the final document will, and this is kind of our first stab at those costs. I apologize, this didn't make it into your packet, but you can kind of see where we're landing. $2.2 to $3.1 million for overall development. That does include a 20% contingency, and it does include a 1% for art, which is something that the Arts and Humanities Advisory Board has recommended. So basically, setting aside a small portion of each phase in order to dedicate that towards some sort of public art component within that phase. So this is a preliminary stab. We'll get these to you to review in more detail, and then we'll incorporate these into the final plan as well. And these are kind of planning numbers just to give us a general ballpark of where we think cost development will go. Chapter Eight shows us how we will manage the property, and really, that nine acres of developed park will be maintained in the same way that all of our developed parks are with a kind of a higher level of maintenance and attention. The majority of the park in that natural area will be treated a lot like we treat water park or parts of northeast parks, some of those more natural area parks. One thing that we are recommending is to remove the woody vegetation from the prairie areas. So the red cedar, the sumac, the dogwood. We've already started some of that in areas. We are recommending in this plan to burn the prairie. That's a management tool that's often used in the Flint Hills. We're all familiar, and even now, in the past couple of weeks, we've seen some, or smelt the smoke. But we think that's an effective management tool to get control back of the park. So you see images like this where lots of cedar invaded areas of the park. Over time, that's, we think, a liability not only to the ecology of the prairie and the grasses that should be growing there, but also for public safety. We talk about in the report about how red cedar can fuel fire, whether that's from lightning strikes or from accidental fires that are set. And so we want to be cautious of that as we've developed up to the edge of the park that we're not contributing to some future incident. So we did have a fire in the park. It was accidentally set. So this is a view kind of near the airport overlook area in September of 2016. That fire was set in the early, late hours of March 23rd, and Manhattan Fire Department responded. No structures were damaged, no lives were in danger, but it did burn about five and a half acres of the park just from some kids having fun one evening when the wind picked up at their campfire site. And so whether it's intentional or not, that's kind of the danger that we see with the landscape as it is. This was a month later after forestry crews came in to kind of clean the site up, and then last fall, this is the site today. And so we're kind of using that as the example of what the park should look like. I walked out there and there were numerous butterflies and other pollinators circling areas where there used to be a cedar tree, now there's native plants popping up. So we think that's a good example. It is a partnership with the Kansas Forest Service, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, Manhattan Fire Department, K-State Range Management Professionals. Some of those folks are here tonight and could talk in more detail. And we've had those folks in the room already kind of talking about what this management strategy would look like, because it is a new management strategy for the city. Obviously, neighborhood outreach and education would be important to make sure that neighbors understood not only the intentions, you know, and how we would manage that process for their safety. And we also think that there's some educational opportunities through a prescribed burn for the Flint Hills Discovery Center to help educate folks about those natural processes and about the benefits of managed fire. Chapter Eight also talks about trail development standards, and there's, we envision several different types of trail in the park, whether they be paved or screenings to allow greater levels of access for all users, as well as maybe some mowed paths or natural surface, soft surface type hiking trails for those that want a little bit more challenge or difficulty in their exploration. And so just some examples of what those two different styles of trail might look like, as well as the potential, how we could rate those trails and level 1, 2, 3, 4, so that users, when they started that trek, would know what they were getting into. We think that kind of signage would be important to incorporate. Of course, building those to certain standards, you know, so that they're sustainable, can be maintained, would be of utmost importance to us as we get into design and development. So we're looking for feedback on the plan. We've been taking feedback from the community throughout this last month. We'd make some changes that you direct us to, and then bring the plan back at a later date for your acceptance. So tonight, we're just looking for feedback. We're not looking for a motion or anything like that, but happy to take your questions if you have any.
I'm very pleased with the master plan and the level of, it's like one a consultant would develop, so. Very high level, I think. And I think you've anticipated a number of our questions and dealt with them so that they are not as front and center for us. I did notice the elevation, the highest elevation point, I think, was 1070, 1080?
I think 1080.
And then there are two peaks close by that were 12, it was 12, that were 1290, but still, that is just really high, so. There are the mountains of Manhattan, right?
It's one of the higher points in the city.
We need some mountains.
Yes.
To attract people. I really am, one of the benefits of this is the fire danger to the homes that are there, and I think that that neighborhood would be especially pleased to have that removed. As I look to the west and the northwest of our community, sometimes the cedar trees are really tall, and people like living back in, you know, where it's private, but those trees are just so ominous sometimes with regard to a fire, and especially as dry as seems like that we're becoming, so, this year especially. So I'm happy with that. I wondered about, I didn't see a reference really to a trail surface, and it might be I just didn't read that particular paragraph or something, but I assume you will have some temporary surfaces in the beginning, followed by some areas that are usually wet and need to be paved, or, so, what's the plan there?
Yeah, we obviously pave, or proposing paved pathways around the entrances, around those developed areas. Beyond that, the plan as of now doesn't specify exactly which segments would be what surface type. We talk in more general terms about screenings, limestone screenings, like portions of linear trail for some, maybe mowed pathways like we have out there currently. We do have about a mile of trail that's mowed currently that folks are actively using now. The grades have not been adjusted at all. It's just the mower went down this path and people are walking on it. So, you know, we'd envision some corrections to those grade issues in the future to make them a little bit more friendly for everyone. And then some trails may be kind of that single-track hiking-style trail, whereas, you know, the paved ones may be six or eight feet, or screenings may be six or eight feet. Those hiking paths may be a lot more narrow. I think the intent would be that as you get further from the entrances, you may get into more of those rugged-type trails. Obviously, accessibility is one thing that's top of mind, and we want to make sure that every user, no matter their ability, is able to experience portions of the park and have those experiences of the scenic views or that discovery or surprise as they, you know, find something in the park. That said, not every part of the park would have to be accessible, and so that's where we get into some paved we get into some paved, some screenings, some more rugged hiking pathways for those who want a little bit more challenge in their adventure.
Commissioners?
Yes, Jericho. Should we ask for the public first?
Yeah, we can ask our questions, yeah, because we aren't voting.
At the beginning, when you mentioned that you had found some evidence of native people being on that land before, do you know who it was, or any more information about that?
I will defer to a member of the audience tonight, Lauren Ritter-Bush, who's an archaeologist with K-State, and she could, I could invite her up now or during public comment. So Lauren, here.
Hello, good evening. Just real briefly, we're talking about peoples of, well, we can't date when they were there, probably over a very long time. Could be as far back as 13,000 years ago, or as recently as 500 years ago. Either way, even 500 years ago, we really can't give them a name.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Because they are, well, they're the ancestors of native peoples, but a lot of the native peoples we know from historic times in this area, like the Kanza, they came much later from elsewhere.
Okay.
So it would be some unknown group.
Got it.
And unfortunately, the kind of site up there is one that we can't date, so it could be spanning a lot of different time periods.
Thank you. Only reason I ask that is I would hope as we're developing out this master plan, either through education or art, I mean, I could be biased because I have some strong Native American rights, but I think it's important when we have the opportunity that we pay homage to our history and the people who were there a lot longer than, way before we were. So I'd like to see that included in the art or the education somehow, which you might have already planned to do, but I just wanted to put that out there. My other question had more to do with funding. So you said you had $100,000 this year. You have $100,000 CIP for next year for us to consider. So if the overall cost is about 2.2 million dollars, and we stay on that track in 22 years, we'll have a finished park. So my question for you is, are we going to keep putting our CIP, those requests still at $100,000, or are you going to bump up those requests, or is there funding, maybe a different funding mechanism you were thinking of to potentially complete this out, or is our goal date 20 years from now? Or is that completely up to us?
It's somewhat up to commissions to decide. Obviously, it's a long-range vision for the park. We have lots of master plans that are intended to be implemented over time. Obviously, the goal is always to complete those plans and complete what the community has told us they would like, but we do run into the issue of dollars that are available. I think, you know, this plan does identify lots of alternative sources that are not necessarily city dollars, that we could use city dollars as grant matches, for instance, to extend our local dollars a little bit further. The costs that we've developed so far were developed after the 2018 project was approved and developed a little bit after the 19 CIP was submitted. So in future years, could those be more for discussion? Certainly. I think we'll have to come up with a more refined strategy as we start that implementation process of what, where, how much, you know, we're looking to fund. That 2.2 to 3.1 is also assuming all contracted bid work. It doesn't assume for cost purposes any in-house work that could be done by our staff. You know, we have equipment, we have people that know how to build certain things, and so some items can probably get accomplished that way, and, you know, would just become zero off of that, you know, money off of that bigger number.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
Yep.
Hi Wyatt, you did an extraordinary job with this.
Thank you.
I'm so happy that you got recognized this evening.
Thank you.
I think we are very blessed to have a phenomenal staff who love what they do, because this is very forward-thinking, and you included so many community members, and along with that, not just the Parks and Advisory Board, but the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Board, as well as the Arts and Humanities Board. And you often don't think of the Arts and Humanities in correlation with something of a park. You might think more of fine arts. But I'm glad they were all part of this discussion, because I think this is a project well worth pursuing. And I also want to thank Tim and Angie Schultz for donating the land for this purpose. Like I said, a lot of work has been put into it. It's a quality-of-life thing. Every time you think about people moving to Manhattan, that's one of the key things. They like our schools, they like the housing, and they like quality-of-life issues. So it's not just the spouse, it's the entire family that's moving here. And I like the nature aspect of it. I don't know if we can put in a clause somewhere in the future not to have astroturf or artificial surfaces or something of that sort. I think, you know, we have enough of that, and that just gets expensive, and it kind of takes away the beauty of the Flint Hills. And I don't know if we have any clauses that we can put in as we move forward on this. Absolutely right, we don't have enough students. I'm a school teacher, we don't have students playing outside anymore. We actually took a lot of recess out of schools these days, too, so they're not even getting that anymore. I think this provides a preventive measure for physical, mental, and emotional needs, and a good place for families to be on such a huge space area. I also like the fact that there are many paths for other communities and neighborhoods to come into it, and not just one way, so I think that's going to be nice. One thing I really like about this plan is the 1% dedicated to artwork. I almost think we need to have that in any plan that we make, regardless of facility or anything of that sort. When you go to other communities, you see a lot of art pieces. We have a lot of buildings, but nothing aesthetically pleasing. It's just a very naked town sometimes. So I'm glad that's included in this picture or the vision master plan for the park area. As I said, keeping it natural, you know, I think as with anything, questions about the price always comes up, the cost. I hope we look at donations a little bit more. We have a lot of community members that like outdoors and that like parks, and if we can look at anything, whether it's a center where they can put a name on it, or a bench, or whatever it is, all of those costs add up. So if we can make an active, aggressive attempt for those types of monies to come in, because the rest of it, it's going to fall on us anyway. I don't expect anybody to take care of 3 million, although we do have families in the community who can put up 3 million dollars. So that's always an option. But I would like to see what other small donations we can get towards this, kind of like the pavilion that we have, which was by, I think, Dave Dryling and Ruth and John Weffold, something of that sort. So you talked about taking out the cedars and everything. So, you know, we've done plans, I think, during Christmas, where people come and pick up cedar plants or cedar trees. I don't know what a cedar, I'm not a plant person, I don't know what that is. But if we can have options where people can take what they need or use it for other purposes, instead of us doing all of the work and just getting rid of it, maybe there are community members or organizations or construction people, I don't know, any carpentry people that might want to look at something like this, and give that option also for community members to take advantage of it, instead of us trying to dispose of it really fast. I saw the Facebook comments, I thought those were really good. Usually, there's negative stuff, but this was all positive. They were all on board with it, and I think the community is excited about this park and where it's going to go, and I think it's because of the trails, and it's very, it's not about competitive sports, it's about families, and I think that speaks well for our community. So thank you for all the work, and I would help move this along, and I don't think there's any changes, except I'm sure many commissioners in the future will discuss cost as it moves on. So thank you, and thank you for everybody that worked on it as well.
Well, thank you. I will say that in regard to the playground surfacing, I don't know that we have that detail in here yet, and when we cost estimated, we did assume of engineered wood fiber, which is a mulch-type play surfacing, not the synthetic turf. There is some initial cost savings, it's more maintenance, but it does have that more natural look to it, and so I think we'd look to that for these playgrounds. And your point about community, the community has been very supportive, I think, of the entire process, and getting us feedback, showing up at meetings, you know, excited about where we're headed, and so I think it will be very well received once we get more implemented on the ground for them to enjoy.
I'd like to hear from the public before I comment.
Okay. At this point, we would open the floor to the public for comments, if you'd like to come forward and state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Katie Kingry Page. I'm a landscape architect, and I'm an associate professor of landscape architecture at K-State. I'm also a citizen of Manhattan, I live at 617 Kearney Street. I think many of you are familiar with the issues that we talk about with children in terms of nature deficit disorder, in terms of wanting to have kids who are free-range, who are pushing the edges of their exploratory domain, and yet there's so many challenges to us in cities particularly to allow that kind of childhood. A few years ago, one of my graduate students studied the city of Manhattan. What he was interested in knowing was what is the geography of nature access if you're a kid in Manhattan? And if you're a kid with choices of moving on foot or on bicycle, where do we have the best and worst access to nature? And interestingly, and maybe somewhat surprisingly, he found that the west side of town, those kids had less easy access to nature places. So I'm here to tell you that I think this park is an incredible opportunity for Manhattan, that it's really needed for the growth and development of not just our kids, but the rest of the community. I really appreciated Commissioner Reddy's remarks about that. It's so well-positioned in terms of allowing many neighborhoods to have children walk directly into that park. I was part of the process, along with Wyatt and many other people. I helped to lead the engagement with Amanda Arnold School, and it was super fun to work with dozens of sixth graders. You should have seen the really creative, creative ideas that they came up with for this park. Many of them lived near the park, they could visualize using it, and even those who didn't were just so thrilled to think of more opportunities. In my work and practice, I have expertise both in designing landscapes for children and youth, but also in native plants landscapes. And so to me personally, this is really exciting, that we could have another place where the people of Manhattan, in particular our youth, could experience native plants right here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Would others like to speak?
Hi, I'm Clint McAllister. I live at 106 North Third Street, down by the mall. I have had many conversations with Wyatt and Eddie about trails in the area. I'm more specifically, also work with Manhattan Trail Works, kind of one of the people that helped found that, along with Aaron Apple, sitting back over there. I've done a decade's worth of volunteer work for our trail system, most notably the Manhattan River Trails. And I don't know how many of you have been out there before, but it's a shared hiking and biking trail, and I would like to see more of that. The report, of course, is excellent. I felt mountain biking was a little bit underrepresented in that, and so I just want to make sure that that's kind of in your minds as you're thinking about this, that there, as far as shared availability between hiking and biking trails, the design, implementation of the trails to make them sustainable and maintenance is very similar between the two uses. And we, as, myself as a cyclist, have been functioning fine with hikers for over 10 years now. I'm not aware of any serious injuries that have occurred between hikers and bikers, so it's also very safe. And I would also be very interested in giving my time to help develop the trail system, not just for hikers, but also for cyclists. So I just wanted to kind of put that out as something that I think should be a bigger focus of some of the more rugged trails, is probably an easy term to put it as, those that would get away from the main entrances of the park, I think could easily be shared with hikers as well as cyclists. So, kind of said my bit.
Good evening, my name is Mike Haddock. I live at 741 Canfield Drive. I'm Associate Dean of Libraries at K-State, but I'm here with a different hat on. I'm on the Board of Directors of the Kansas Native Plant Society. Also, I'm currently the past president of that organization. We were very pleased with the plan that's been drawn up, and we've had some opportunities to go out initially with Wyatt, when they were developing the plan, looking at the plants, the flora that's on the site, what some of the work that might need to be done there. We're very pleased with it being kept a large part natural. And we were, several of us were involved with the initial wildflower walk, which I think we had 50-some people turn out for, and we would hope that as the park is developed, we'd have a lot more educational opportunities as the society to go out and lead people on things like the wildflower walk. So we're very supportive of the plan.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Julian. I live at 2217 Woodridge Drive, and I teach 6th grade at Amanda Arnold Elementary. Two years ago, Mr. Thompson approached Dr. Shivers about encouraging our school to participate in the planning of this park. And we got together and we talked about some of the things that our students would need to know in order to help prepare a plan. I think that started in January and we finished in April, and every two weeks, Mr. Thompson helped coordinate bringing in experts from all over. We even ended up with someone coming from the National Park Service to our school to talk about all kinds of different things, to educate them about archeology, to educate them about architecture, to educate them about all kinds of things, trail making, that they would need to know in order to help prepare this. So I just want to thank you for encouraging us to participate in this project. It was fantastic. One thing we know for sure is if you help prepare and plan something, you're more likely to take good care of it, and a lot of our students are the ones who will be using it for years to come. I have just a couple, I should have sent these two years ago, I apologize, but I have some notes from students. I just want to share with you some of their thoughts as they were finishing up this project. So a couple notes to some different people who are involved. This is one to Mr. Thompson. "Thank you for the opportunity to design a park. We learn more about the process of designing and making a park like finding out the slope of a hill. It was a lot of fun, especially when we went out to Lee Mill Heights Park. That was my favorite park." Part of this project included them creating their vision for the park and presenting that to members of the community. That was such a boost and confidence to them to be able to share their vision. Mr. Thompson, here's a bunch of notes from some sixth graders. Thank you. I have some, I've given away some already, but I have some from Aaron Apple as well. And just one, "Dear Aaron Apple, thank you for helping us learn more about trails. Thanks to you, I know a lot more about trail building. I thought it was so cool to see all the tools used to build trails. I learned a lot, so thanks. I impressed my parents when I told them all about trail building. Thanks for coming to my school and spreading your knowledge throughout the 6th grade. I really appreciate it." So these are for you. And I don't think Daniel Shay-Pow is here tonight, because there were a lot of thanks for him, for Lauren Ritter-Bush, for Katie. So I just, again, thank you. I am really excited to see this come to life.
It would be interesting to track the students and see how many community planners and park planners come from that class.
There were a few that said, "I think I want to be an architect."
Exactly, yeah, okay. Landscape architect, I think, okay. Do others wish to speak? Please come forward.
My name is Carol Baldwin, and I live at 1500 Waterford Drive, and I am a Range Management Specialist and Research Associate Professor at K-State. And the ideas for burning, I think, are apt and appropriate for this site, and I want to, I'm grateful for Wyatt for considering it. When we first discussed it and we talked about how close the homes were and the problems there might be in persuading homeowners to accept this, he was at least willing to listen. And I was in Greeley, Colorado this spring, and the city department there was talking about how they burned within 400 feet of $750,000 houses without a single complaint. And I was flabbergasted, and they started outlining the procedure that they went through to educate the public before they did the burn. It was quite extensive. And I really feel that we could work with the city on that and help put together a plan so that homeowners understood why we are burning. There were a couple of things. When you burn a site the first time, where there's trees as large as there are out there now, there will be tree carcasses, so the entire tree will not be burned in a prescribed fire. Sometimes in a wildfire, they are, and sometimes they aren't, but definitely under prescribed fire, those larger tree carcasses will remain, and they will probably need will probably need to be cut down or ground off. That's the other preferred treatment in getting rid of them. The other thing is that fire is repetitive. Red cedars will grow. Once they get started, they'll grow about a foot a year. So there needs to be a plan for return fire intervals. Again, this could be an educational thing, that there is no certification that's needed to burn, and it would be, for members of the community that wanted to participate, it would be an excellent learning opportunity for natural resources. And the final thing I wanted to say is that when I drive into Manhattan, I am terrified by the amount of red cedar around this community. It is like surrounding the community with dynamite. And there just needs to be one bad accident, and there's acres and acres and acres of cedar. And when cedar burns, unlike a lot of other fuels, it burns explosively, it burns very fast, very hot, and it throws off large amounts of embers. So you not only have the fire that you're dealing with, you're constantly setting fires out ahead of the fire line, which is one reason these recent fires, wildfires in Kansas have been so difficult to control. So as a homeowner, I would think it would be really important to take down as much cedar as possible. When people build a house on top of a hill in the middle of prairie and surround it with red cedar, it is an invitation for that house to burn down. Fire moves faster as it goes uphill, and then the cedars just add to that. And I can see potential for very large wildfire problems in and around Manhattan. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Does anyone else wish to speak? Please come forward.
Tim Schultz, 2561 Bent Tree Drive. I'd personally like to thank Wyatt. Obviously, he developed a plan here that fully respected our wishes to keep this land mostly natural. I am disappointed that the one sixth grader's mole tunnels plan didn't get implemented. Any of you went to the Discovery Center and looked at some of these plans. It was quite interesting to see some of those things. But it's very exciting for us. Obviously, we started two developments in the mid, early 2000s, I guess, and started developing Long Seating Drive right after across the bridge of Wildcat Creek, and at the same time started up in the Lee Mill Heights area right by the water tower. And, you know, it's 15, 15 years of work there. And, you know, as my career ends, it's nice to see those two things come together, and they're now joined by a park, which is, it's a very nice, a very nice trail system that goes down through connecting Miller Parkway down into the Stone Point area. And I'm, again, just would like to thank Wyatt for all the hard work and everybody else. Obviously, there are a lot of people had a lot of input into this plan, so thank you.
Thank you for your contributions.
My name is Mike Disney. I'm a citizen here in Kansas, Manhattan, 1849 Fairchild Avenue. I'm here to represent the Fish and Wildlife Service. We're a potential funding partner for this project. We do projects like this all over the state, where we go in and we identify a resource concern, this one being brush management that's impacting the prairie. Like Carol said, it's a huge public safety issue as far as heavy fuels that could potentially burn, but those pictures that Wyatt shared earlier with how that landscape is going to heal post-fire as we manage that into the future, the native plants are already there, and it's going to be sustained. And something that I just wanted to comment too was the incredible experience we have with the Flint Hills Discovery Center that has a great story, but this could be the exclamation point. Because we can, we learn about the prairie at the Discovery Center, and we can experience it through this park, so. And part of my voice being gone right now is all the cedar pollen this time of year. It's terrible. So we cut more of those down, maybe I can talk. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mike? Does anyone else wish? Please.
Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Rod Harms. I live at 101 Waterbridge Road. And like the other speakers, I commend Wyatt and the staff. Process, process, process. It's been a great process and will, as sixth grade teacher, the dividends of that will pay many decades into the future. I'd also like to comment that reiterate the trails, be it hiking, biking, whatever, running across country. A few years ago, K-State had the opportunity to host the Big 12 Championship Cross Country Meet, and we did not have in our community trails sufficient to do that. So I think we're moving in that direction, and the national trends that I read show that the interest nationally is that direction. So I think our community is reflective of what we're seeing and some of the quality of life issues that Commissioner Reddy. So my final comment would be, and it sounds like we've got good comfort and ground swell with the burning, but when we purchased our land 23 years ago, it looked worse than the picture in the upper right corner. You could not drive anywhere on the property without scratching the side of a cedar tree. It can be done. The management experts, even private citizens with friends help. This can be brought back to the native prairie over time, and it is an educational process to do that, and one that we find the community is extremely interested in because it's part of our cultural history. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rod.
Just a couple last comments as far as the Park Service goes. I think everybody has showed you tonight that this park is more than what most any other park you have in the city already. You have partnerships that have already developed. You have citywide interest. You have national interest. You have people that want to see this be natural. You have an education aspect of it. You have a fundraising aspect of it. You've already got the land. Look at the dollar amount that you have already in your pocket, and I would encourage you to look at that $3 million and spread that out over the 95 acres and everything that you could have involved in that. For $3 million, it really isn't much money in the whole scheme of things. And so, yes, there are fundraisers that can be done, there are grants that can raise the money for that. I think it would come along fairly quickly and easily. And support from the city, financial support, and your backing of the project, I think, could make this become, rather than a 20- or 22-year project, more of a two-to-five-year project. So I'm excited to see this happen. I'm not going anywhere. I'm still going to be involved in this. I'm going to make sure Wyatt keeps me in the loop. We do have Tallgrass National Prairie Preserve just south of here, and our staff has been here to help out for the sixth grade visits as well. It's three-hour drive for me. That's what I've done today. I'm going to drive back three hours, so it's easy for me to get here. And I assure you that I will be here for future meetings. I do want to see a dedication done for the park, and I'd like to be a part of that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I think there was someone else back here. Yeah, hi.
Mike Prouse. I live over at 311 North 14th Street. And I really do want to see this come to fruition as well. I grew up in the Black Hills, South Dakota. This is as close as I get to that and stay in Manhattan. But my issue with it all is that I've been at 311 North 14th for six, since 2006, just up the street from there, and that's when the discussion came about with plans to improve City Park. And there have been necessary improvements to City Park, and there have been some minor just things that were added just to kind of increase the quality of life for families and for people around there. But generally speaking, that plan has been in place, or at least started in 2006, been chugging along slowly. 2015, I think it was, or whatever it was, we came up with these master plans, and they just fell on their face. Now, I'm probably guilty of just not being involved in the community as I could be. I don't make the meetings. I don't always get online and look at everything that's going on, but I try to keep up with it. But I feel, I feel like City Park's been forgotten. I feel like we're talking about spending a lot of money on this park, which is, I think it's great, it's a brilliant plan, I think it's beautiful, but we're not taking care of something we already have in place. There are huge patches over there that don't have any grass, it's dirt. I mean, the trails, the walkway around the park's an improvement, the pool obviously was an improvement, but there were discussions about irrigation in City Park. It's dirt, it's dry, it's weeds. I think that there could be more focus placed on that. And I think at the very least, and I don't think it's too much to ask, and not just for City Park, but for all the parks in Manhattan, before you dive into something like this and spend $3 million, let's look back and educate the community what we're doing for these other parks. Where we've come from, where we're headed, or if it's just over. I don't know what's going on with the City Park master plan. We had options we voted on, and then it just disappeared. I'd like that to be addressed. That's it. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. Okay. Wyatt?
Yeah.
You were going to speak to that.
Yeah, if I could. I appreciate Mike's comments. I'm sure it does appear that City Park master plan kind of fell off the face of the earth. I understand why he would think that. I can assure you, Mike, that that's not the case. We'll be actually back in front of you on April 24th at a work session revisiting that plan. It was, we worked on it. The community kind of voted and gave us a lot of feedback on, we got basically to chapter five of this report, and then we hit pause because there were some questions related to indoor aquatics and outdoor tennis complex, and the role that those two elements should play in City Park versus somewhere else. And then we got into bigger discussions with the community about what those uses should be and where those uses would be most appropriate, and that led to facility feasibility studies, ballot question in November. We think we've answered those questions about competitive tennis, you know, complex at CECO. We've answered that question about indoor aquatics in terms of covering City Park pool. We think that's off the table, and the recommendation is to potentially do something at CECO in the future. So we're ready to reengage with that process. Our park planner, Alfonso Leva, is actively working on those plans now, and we'll have an update for you in April, about a month from now. And then we'll, you know, finalize that plan, take feedback on it, and then develop a strategy, much like this one, which is a phased approach for funding, you know, we'll figure out how we can accomplish that over time. I do think that, you know, the plan doesn't recommend spending $3 million at this park all at once, and part of that is because we have 29 parks, and we have so much money to go around amongst all of those. Are there certain things we can do at City Park or other parks, you know, in terms of maintenance to improve those and make those areas usable that's, you know, significantly less than $1 million a project? Absolutely. And our staff can take a look at those. So I think, I think we can address, hopefully, Mike, I don't know where you're sitting, that addresses, you know, his question and kind of provides some context for you all as well.
Thank you very much, Wyatt and Mike. Can't ask for a one-month turnaround. I mean, most of the time.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you both. Does anyone else wish to speak? Okay, I'll close the public comments. Mike, you wanted to speak?
Yeah, I appreciate, I think, the process as much as anything, that all the community coming together and the generosity of the Schultz family and the dedication of time by everybody. So having a natural park is a great thing for the city, I think, plus the connectivity of the trails system. Guess my, I have a couple recommendations. One is that access to me is key, so we get it started and get community interest quickly. So that means, how do you get into the trail? And you've got, I think, access for the people who live there, and then you've got to think about access for the people who do not live there and are going to drive. And then I would just start with natural trails. And then as your plan progresses, you can add gravelling, or you can add concreting, or whatever it is you're going to do, particularly up on the upper side. But those natural trails, to me, are very attractive. I grew up on natural trails, and I would have been off-put by having concrete to walk on, quite frankly, in the woods. Then, when you, when you have young people out there, rather than just having, walking down the trails, when you're in Europe, there are any number of parkours where you might have logs of different heights that kids step on and go up on, and then you might have a little swing or some exercises out there made with good, solid material. And in your pictures, you represented some signage that had, were on big log posts, and I'd really encourage that. It's not only more maintainable, but it looks natural. So we don't have tubusx or something out there configured. So access into it, start with trails that are natural, and have some signage up already so people know where they're going. Now, for financing, we've got a couple things to think about. One is, as you mentioned, every time we add something, there's operational costs. It's not just building it because we're already spread thin. So that's not a big deal, but I think for all of us, we have to know what that is. So if there's a marginal increase in operational costs, we need to know what it is. And I think everybody will be supportive of it, it's just we don't want to be surprised. And I think there's something to be gained here by having an organization similar to some of our other support organizations, such as Friends of the Zoo and Friends of the Flint Hills Discovery Center. If we have Friends of the Park here for this particular park, I think we can gain some traction on helping getting some community support to offset some of that cost. Because I'd like to have it done sooner rather than later, so we don't linger this thing too long. Thanks.
Other Commissioners?
I haven't said anything. I think it's a great, great plan. You know, I like the way it's all come together and everybody's contribution to it. I agree with Commissioner Dodson because, you know, the financing's always the issue. So to me, I think he's absolutely correct. You know, some simple access, so folks can get in, you know, walking from the housing area, driving. And then the natural trails, I mean, I spent, I guess, folks were cutting Christmas trees down there for two years in a row, getting rid of some of those cedars, and I was out there both times and hiked all that, and what you had was natural trails. You mowed, you know, some strips there, and some of it was a little bit rough, and you could twist an ankle, but I think it was great. I walked all over it, and I think that's fantastic. And you can do that with a very limited budget. And then we just have to incrementally, you know, make improvements on it. And hopefully, that won't take us, you know, 20 years, you know, to do so. It just depends on, you know, what the tax receipts are for the quality of life and those kind of things. But I think you can be frugal with the money, and I agree, you've got to spread it across all the parks. You can't just throw it all there. And it just isn't feasible to wave a wand and say, you know, "Let's go ahead and invest $3 million on that, $12 million on public works." I mean, we could spend $15 million tonight with a wave of a hand, and that's just not doable. So we've got to stay within our budget, and I think you've done a great job of that. So I think this is a great plan, and it's, people need to understand it's a vision, that's the ideal state, that's where we want to be. But, you know, when you're in business and you have a vision for something, it's normally something that's 10 years out, and that's what master plans are. You don't wave a wand and make them happen the next day. But, but once you have that master plan, you've got to stick with it and not forget it, like was mentioned about, you know, City Park. We've got to plug away on all those and keep making incremental progress. So, great job.
Okay. Unless there are other comments, we're adjourned.